I am so glad that you are here. And welcome this afternoon. Thank you for braving the weather and joining us. This is very informal, and I just want to give you guys a chance to ask some questions, get to know us. I have a few comments, just to kind of explain who West 40 is. Most people don't know West 40, and so I want to take a little time and talk about that. And I want to talk about the vision for this building and where we're headed. And interrupt me with questions if you like, or this whole crew over here, our folks from West 40, that can help answer some questions about our hopes and our dreams and our plans for moving to Maywood. So this has happened very quickly. We just closed on the building about a week and a half ago. And so as quickly as we could get people together and open the doors, we did that. So we have some very definite plans I'm going to share in a little bit. And a lot of open white space to figure out where we're going next. I've started conversations with the mayor, and we're going to be working as part of the community. You know, we're not a standalone situation. So who is West 40? First of all, I'm Mark. I'm Dr. Mark Kleisner. I'm the executive director of West 40. And Dr. Mike Pop is right there. He's the assistant director in West 40. And each of these people play important roles in our organization. And we do a lot of different things, but I want to start first with structure. So West 40 serves as a regional office of education. There are 38 of those across the state. And so our primary role is to be the intermediate service center between the local school districts and the State Board of Education. So we're in between those two. I like to draw a map kind of in the air that if you think about going out 90 to O'Hare, and then down 294, and then up 55, that trapezoid is roughly our region. So we serve 41 districts in Western Cook County, and that includes 152 school buildings. It's about 95,000 students and about 7,000 educators. So that's our region. Now, one of the fun things that's part of our role is that I've also been asked to serve as the president of all 38 offices. So at different times, I'm visiting different parts of the state and visiting from Carbondale to Rockford. And so I kind of like to say that now it's my job to keep 2 million kids safe and getting the best education that they can. That's because I have such an amazing team that helps me keep things going locally. So that's step number one. If you were to look in the school code and in law, that's what establishes us and where we are. Currently, our office is on Roosevelt Road in Hillside. And part of the beauty of moving to Maywood is it's like smack dab right in the middle of that region I just described, which is great in terms of how we can serve. So back to the law books. The purpose of offices like ours are threefold. The first is compliance. So we have people in our office that go into every single school building in Western Cook County. They open every door. They open every closet. They check the extension cords and the electrical and the boiler and everything. It's about 300 items on their checklist. And Mr. Bogren, who's in charge of that division, he'll tell you, it's my job to make sure that every kid comes to school in a safe place. So he has a team of about four people. He is one of those four. And they go to every single school. The other part of compliance is that they check on and they help districts deal with policies and procedures, things like fire drills and escape routes and things like that. So that division of our office, we call it comprehensive educational services. They are the ones that deal with compliance. Then we have a second strand that is focused on professional learning for teachers. So when you were a kid growing up, and you remember the teachers had Teacher Institute Day, right? They were doing workshops and things like that. Well, we do it a little bit differently, but that's our focus, is how to help teachers get better at what they do. And actually, several of the people over here are part of that team too. And so we do workshops all year long. We do a lot of coaching in the districts. We work with our districts to help them get better. And lately, coming out of the pandemic, there's been a lot of discussion about social, emotional learning and mental health. So we've been going into schools, helping teachers understand the mental health needs of kids and how we can best support them. So that's a huge catalog of different kinds of things, from technology to reading, writing, and arithmetic, to social, emotional learning, and kind of everything in between. Also, that division has been doing quite a bit of work in school improvement planning. And so districts all over West 40 have been asking for our help, like, how can we get better at what we do? How can we keep our kids safer? How can we be more current? How can we help our achievement go up? And you may have heard like on the news lately, there's terms like learning loss. I'm not real fond of that, but it's a common one. Well, we know that kids had a rough time during COVID. So our professional learning team is helping teachers get better at that. So the third component of those three, so the first was compliance, second was professional learning. The third is programs relative to students who are at risk. Every one of those 38 offices across the state does something with students who've been identified at risk. And the loose definition of at risk is students that probably aren't going to graduate. So somebody has said, boy, this child's having trouble with attendance. They're having trouble with grades. Maybe they're having some trouble with behavior, but for some reason, they're not on track to graduate. So that puts them at risk. Again, that's not a term we like to use a lot. We like to think that our kids are at promise, not at risk. But we're going to focus on their strengths and help them get better at what they do. So if you were to visit any office like ours around the state, if you went to Carbondale or Edwardsville or East St. Louis, if you went to Peoria, Springfield, Rockford, each of those offices does those three things. I'm excited to tell you that this office that's coming here to this neighborhood is really one of the most forward-thinking, innovative offices across the state. By far, we have the largest staff, the largest programming. We are looking for ways to be outside of the box. My staff will tell you, I often say, we don't think outside the box. We live outside the box. We're going to do things differently and better, and we're excited about that. Well, what I want to start with then, in terms of moving to Maywood, is that third strand, that student strand, has a whole continuum of services. Some students need a little bit of help. And I'm going to point at Nancy in the back there in her purple shirt. Nancy is the director of programs that's helping with things like students are having trouble with attendance. They need a little bit of help and encouragement to get back to school. What would it take to help them get back to school? And then beyond that, we have 30 programs in schools around West 40 where we have social workers and counselors who actually work in the schools, helping students be successful. So for whatever reason they're struggling, our folks are there to help them with whatever barriers are in the way. And right now, we're in 30 schools. I learned this morning that we're probably getting three more in Bellwood, starting in the fall. So we're excited about helping even more students. So then the next step is we have some students, particularly during COVID, we had students that couldn't come back. They had medical situations in their home, or they had some mental health issues about which, you know, we don't delve too deeply into diagnosis. But when someone else diagnoses a child that has significant fears or concerns or can't come back. So we started a remote school. And that remote school is a full-day, in-person school online. So they have real teachers. It's not just watching. They have real teachers. They have real counselors, real social workers. So again, it's another version of that kind of at-risk. And that's been very successful. In fact, we've been asked to extend that to both North Cook and South Cook. So we're going to add another 100 districts next year to our remote school. So you kind of see this pattern that whatever students need, if they're struggling, they're struggling a little bit, a little bit more, a little bit more, we have a whole continuum to help them meet those needs. And we have another program that we call a regional safe school. And the purpose of that is students are really significantly struggling. And, you know, we try to keep the ratio between staff and students really low. We have a lot of behavioral support, a lot of mental health support. We just wrap them up to help them be successful. And that group is about 40. Oftentimes, it starts a little bit lower and gets a little higher during the year, but roughly 40 students are in that situation where we're providing lots and lots of help to help them be successful. The fun part about that is that some students who are then eligible go back will say, can I stay? I like it here. This is a good thing. So can I stay? And if we agree with the districts, we would love to have students stay. So all in all, all of those student programs in West 40 are currently about 2,000 students that we're serving all over those 40 districts. And I'm very, very excited about that. This space will be kind of the mothership for those 2,000 students, for those programs across that whole continuum. So we'll have some services where students actually attend here, probably 30, 40 students that attend here. We will also have some of the other services that are actually located in the other schools. The organizers, the developers, the directors of those programs will be housed here because we're strongest when we build that continuum all the way across. And if you can imagine a student that's struggling a little bit, and then they're struggling a little more, well, how can we give them a little more service? Or if they're struggling a little bit less, then how do we help them move back, back and forth? So our vision is always to help students and families be successful. All those other things we do, keeping the schools safe in compliance, keeping the schools safe with policy and procedures, or our professional learning. The whole point of professional learning is to equip teachers so students can be really, really successful. So it always comes back to students. Now, I have a few things, if you're interested. I have, if you're a numbers person, I have a bunch of copies of this over on the bleacher. This is our annual report. So this has things like the finances. It has the number of students we serve. We do those every October, so it's almost a year old. Then I also have another brochure. This red, white, and blue one that's over there is about offices like ours, those 38 across the state. I also have a pile of my business cards. I would love for you to take one of the business cards. And the two main reasons are, on the back, it has our mission. This is the West 40 heartbeat. Our mission statement is, we'll meet you where you are. We'll be what you need us to be. We'll walk further with you, and we'll stand strong with you. That's our mission. That's what we live by every day. A number of us carry these around or put them in our computer case so we would know that that's the most important heartbeat. And we want to bring that forth to our communities, to our kids, every single day. The other thing is that on the front of this card, at the very bottom, it has my cell phone number. And as a community member, as a new neighbor, if you want to call me, just pick up the phone and call my cell phone and say, hey, what's going on over there? When are we going to do another meeting? Or can I come see what you're doing? So there's a whole pile of those. And I just mentioned our mission statement. If you're interested, in the future, we're going to have more books like this. We typically call this our six-book set. And each of those programs I just described has its own book, but we wrap them together as a total collection. So if you want to learn about any of our particular programs, we're actually updating these for next spring, or for next fall. So when we have a ribbon cutting, we'll have a new set of books that'll be more up to date. But each of those books talks about the programs that I just referred to. So we're very excited about where we are, where we're going. We currently have two buildings that we rent. And so Karen, four or five years ago, we started looking. And we said, why should we be paying rent? Why don't we buy something and put that money into more services? And so we've been looking for a long time, and this building came about. As you can see, it looks like it was used yesterday. They've taken really, really good care of it. And if we wanted to, we could move in tomorrow. But what we've decided to do is we're going to do a couple phases. Phase one, we're going to get the wing to the east. We're going to get that all cleaned up and ready to go. And that will be where we have our student classrooms for those 20, 30, 40 students. And we'll get that all ready. And then over the course of the next year, we're going to do some things like add air conditioning. We're going to remodel the second floor for probably our professional learning team. We're going to put in all-new windows. Couple people are trying to convince me to redo the floor with our logo. So we'll see where that goes. But there are a couple reasons. One is the supply chain. You've heard this on the news. I want to put in all-new efficiency, high-efficiency windows. And to do that, if we order them today, they won't come in until next March, just because that's where we are with supply chain. So we want to do it as quickly as we can so that our kids can get into a wonderful space, use this wonderful gym, and then spend the next year getting ready for all those other services. Now, I think I saw the piece, I was interviewed in the newspaper a couple days ago. Part of that heartbeat, we're going to meet you where you are. We're going to be what you need us to be. We're going to walk further with you and stand stronger with you, stand strong with you. We realized that we would have the capacity to provide some additional services. So I'm looking forward to working with Mayor Booker. We've got a ministry alliance of faith leaders in the region. And we're going to have meetings like this, and we're going to say, what do we need in Maywood? What kinds of services? And I'm thinking about things possibly like employment services, health services, medical services, things like that that we could have within the building that could serve our community. I don't know what those are until we have a chance to ask. And I definitely want to work in collaboration with the mayor and the community. So there's lots of opportunities with the space. I have to tell a story. I think Dr. Pop, I think the first thing he said to me when we first came here, he's like, look at all the parking. This is amazing. Schools don't have all that parking. That's awesome. So it opens those possibilities. I've already been approached by a couple of churches that have asked if they could lease space. We have some friends that would like to do after-school programs or maybe athletic programs. None of that is planned yet, but the plan is to plan. And we know that we have a wonderful, wonderful space that we can share with the community. And it won't be a nine-to-three kind of timeline. We see ourselves open in the evenings, over the weekends, holidays, and so forth. So it fits very much with our heartbeat. And I'll just be honest with you, it's not like all those other 38 offices around the state. I'm not criticizing them, but we're kind of proud of having a big vision and big dreams of where we can go. There's a lot of possibilities. Part of my team is interested in looking at possibly a preschool program at some point. So all of that's in the works. We'll have to plan together as a community and figure out what's best in this space. So what I can assure you is we're going to do several meetings like this throughout the summer. We'll use our door hanger system or whatever we can to let people know, get feedback from you, let you see the progress as it goes. We use the word heartbeat all the time, and we would like to be someplace where people feel safe and welcome and that we're really serving well. I'm thrilled that Mary Rita Moore is here from Triton. We've worked closely with Triton and with Morton Community Colleges. That's part of our heartbeat. We are education people. So we're looking at ways to support students in setting their career tracks and what that ends up being. It's been wonderful to work with you and our friends at Morton. So those are the starts of our big dreams. I don't know where all that takes us. You know, maybe we've got bigger dreams than just this building. I don't know. Someday, we may have to add on or something. But we know that our heartbeat has led us to the ability to help students change their trajectory. And we have lots and lots of stories. There are some... Heidi, is Heidi here? Did we bring the handouts? Did we bring the handouts? Terrific. So we've got a one-pageer handout. And if you like to see stories, grab a box of Kleenex and go to our YouTube channel because we love listening to students tell their stories. And I'll end with this and open up for questions. But so our students who have been labeled at-risk by somebody, and appropriately so. If a student is in a program and they're not succeeding, they may be at risk of not succeeding. But we take any kid. And we have pretty high success rates that I'm very proud of. And we frequently take our students to places like the state legislature, to the House Appropriations Committee, to the State Board of Education in Chicago. And the students sit in front of them and say, this is what the program has meant to me, or this is what these programs have meant to me. You must fund them across the state. We've got to have programs like this. Without this program, I'd either be in a gang or dead or in jail. And because of that program, I'm on my way to college. Those kinds of stories out of students' mouths are just magic. So if you like YouTube, feel free to check out our YouTube channel. And you'll see on the handout, there's a QR code. It's actually on the back of the yellow and purple shirts. So there's a QR code that you can check. We thought that that would be a good system rather than trying to keep updating emails and things. The QR code's also on the banners that are on the fences. So if you want to check that QR code, that'll let you know where we are in progress and how things are going as we're developing and things like that. And as I said, the QR code will give you access to what's happening. The business cards have my cell phone. You can call me directly. We're just really, really excited to be launching into this next chapter of what West 40 is going to be. It's very likely that in the next three or four years, that number of 2,000 students will probably be more like 3,000 students all across the region. But we anticipate this building, this space, becoming the heartbeat of the entire region. So I know that was kind of rapid fire, like drinking out of a fire hose, but that gives you a 30,000-foot view of what we're about and what we do. And I thought I would open it for questions. You can also ask any of these folks. They're all experts in living our mission. And we've got some snacks and things for you as well. Does anyone have a question they'd like to start with? Yes?
Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you, and thank you. Acquiring this building and providing a resource to the community. And I'm sure everybody in this room will agree that one of the things we need to focus on is mental health now. So I'm hoping that, you know, we will, you know, provide that kind of service and awareness. And one of the things we need to focus on is removing the stigma of mental health and, you know, or getting therapy. And so I'd like to see, you know, how we can go about doing that. And one question I have for you that came to me. Do you work with the School-Based Health Center at Proviso East?
We do.
Okay. Because I would think that they would be an area that would identify a lot of potential at-risk kids who, you know, could use the service.
Yep. Remind me of your name?
Barbara Call.
Barbara. So Barbara was talking about the need for mental health services. Welcome. I'm glad you were able to join us. I'm Mark, by the way. So when I talked about those 2,000 students that we're serving in 30 schools, the people that we hire to insert are typically counselors and social workers. So we're right in line with you, Barbara. But here as a community center, that's something that has come up several times, that if we could partner with the community, with mental health experts, that the ability to provide mental health services within the building or within the community may be top of our list. And we know that to be true all over. If you look at the statistics, it's really very staggering. The suicide rates have gone up. Domestic violence has gone up. It's tragic that what the pandemic has done on top of something that was already a challenge. And we look at supporting those within the schools, but we also realize that we could be the kind of place that would be somewhat anonymous but could have high-quality services available to our families. So it is certainly on our list. It's very much our heartbeat and something that we do. When I talked about our most at-risk students, we have five mental health specialists in that building, for a group of 40 students. So we're right in line with you. We're really committed to helping students with those kinds of struggles. So thank you for that question. Any other... Yes?
I'm constantly on your line extension. What is your plan for food access initiatives? Because we know in our area, food insecurity is an issue. And I see a lot of youth that deals with food insecurity. So will this be a place that would house like a food pantry or a mobile market or a pop-up store? So kids can have access to food and security?
So I didn't pay Constance to ask that question. I promise. I promise. You were thinking the same thing, right? Like, he slipped her a 10 or 20 to ask that question. Constance, thank you for asking. Constance was asking about our plans for providing food. And, you know, I'm going to admit to you, about a year ago, Dr. Pop and I visited all of those 30 programs. And when we were out in the programs, we said, what do you guys need? Do you need more computers? Do you need more curriculum? Do you need more mental health? Do you need more? So we were asking our advocates who are working side by side with families and with students, like, what do you need? Every one of those programs said food. So I'm going to say that currently, we're making a scratch on the surface of that. In our current location in Hillside, every Monday, we do some food delivery. What we found was that a lot of our families couldn't make it all the way to Hillside. So some of those advocates come to Hillside. They pick up the food that we have available and then deliver it to the families that need it. I know that we're only scratching the surface, but I don't see John over there. One of our folks, John, he's already asking where the walk-in freezer and the refrigerator is going to go in this building when we remodel. And we'd like to see that as a source. It's one of those things that I will say, it breaks my heart that people are asking. I mean, I have had phone calls on that cell phone. It's like, is there any way I can get a loaf of bread? And, you know, I wouldn't have thought that that would be part of my job five or six years ago, but it is part of my job, and we're committed to it. And there, there's John Milosovic. He's waving. John is our biggest advocate for distribution of food. And so it will be, Constance, it will be part of what we do here. We don't have specific plans, but we've already started to talk about where the refrigerators and the freezers are going to go and how to access that food. It is very much a high priority for us, even though we're just getting started at it. But thank you for asking. Yes?
I'm with the government at Roosevelt. This is my first school, and I love it. But we just donated, I'm with the PTO.
Okay.
We just donated 180 non-perishable and canned good items to save Ulaia. We did it for Easter. So whatever you guys need, we'll make sure that donations will be met down here.
Fabulous. Fabulous. Thank you. If you couldn't hear, she said that she works with an organization... an organization that was, that's been donating food. And this was her school, so she would love to be part of that as well. Very, very exciting. So there are a number of possibilities in terms of where we go with, with food distribution, but it's certainly, it's going to be part of our mission. Yes?
So I say thank you. This is an amazing opportunity for the community in general. We work closely with West Forty through Marie Alena.
Oh, great.
And so I'm Liz Conseris and Domestic Violence Organization. I just want to offer our support in any way possible that we can be part of this mission that you have and you're bringing to the community.
That's, that's fabulous. Wow. Thank you for that. Somebody get her name. Well, I just wanted to say, something you'll hear me say in, in the future quite a bit, is we're stronger together. And so that's working with Triton, that's working with Morton, that's working with community-based organizations. We know we can't do it all, and we know that we're, we're much stronger together. The other thing you often might hear me say is, you know, people say, how can you take 2,000 at-risk students? And 95% of those graduate high school. How, how does that happen? And what I typically say is, it's not rocket science. We just show up and love them. And that's kind of the heartbeat you'll feel from West Forty. We're going to show up and love them. And whatever it takes to make that difference, we're going to make the difference. We, we kind of like a challenge, you know? We're going to, we're going to figure it out and live and then think outside the box, because we believe we can do something different and significant. One of the things Marie Alena has done is, on our website, there's a place where you can click for resources. And she keeps a calendar of all the food pantries in the region. And it tells which food pantries are open on which days. So if a family is looking for a food pantry on, on a Wednesday, they can look on, on the calendar and see what days, what pantries are open at, at those times. And I really applaud her efforts keeping that current. It's a little, little tricky to keep it all current. But yes, food is really important. And mental health, we're going to, we're going to be strong partners. Yes?
I'm Chris. I just live right across the street.
Yep.
So I know this is a busy area. So will all you guys that's going to be here, going to be parking on the lot there, or you'll be on the street? Because this is a busy street. They just fly down this street. So that'd make me have to stay in my driveway or garage at all times. What you think about that? I wouldn't be able to park on the street because it'd probably be people coming and going. And how will you, the kids be coming? By bus or cars or what?
It's a great question. And when I referred to the, the parking, that was one of our first thoughts. So it's an interesting organization. We are knocking at the door of about 200 employees. But on any given day in this building, it's going to be maybe 20 to, well, maybe 30. Most of those people are out in the field. They're working elsewhere in the school districts all over the region. And so our typical plan for those 20, 30, 40 students, some come by bus, some come by taxi. And we're actually very careful about how they come in. So we don't want to disrupt traffic, but we also want to keep them safe. We typically have two different doors where some of the students come in this way and some come in that way. And it's pretty controlled. So I would venture a guess that you're going to see virtually no change in traffic. You know, when we've come to visit, we see the cars all lined up over there. We intend to be good neighbors and there won't be that many of us here on a daily basis. Even though we're a large organization, the vast majority of our people are out in the, in the field. Now, I'll, I'll be really honest and transparent. About twice a year, we get everybody together. So once in November and once in February, there may be 200 people in this room where we're learning together about how to best meet the needs of the community and, and kids. But on the, for the most part, the traffic is, is pretty sparse.
Why is the police car there?
I don't know why the police car is there. We didn't arrange that. No.
I just thought you arranged it so they could notice the sign there. So, and that people slowed down and see the sign. So.
I, oh, John, yeah.
My understanding is that, that the community, I guess through the stop sign, there was a period where a lot of cars were going by the stop sign and not stopping. So they just put a car there and they noticed that everybody stops.
Oh, I figured that much. But I thought you guys.
No, it wasn't part of today.
That's what I was told, is that just because it's, it's to stop the traffic and they adhere to the stop sign.
Yep.
The stop sign.
Yep, yep. Any other questions in general? And you're, you're invited to have some snacks and mill around and talk to anybody in a West Forty pin or one of the purple and yellow shirts. And I don't know how regularly, you know, as we're doing construction, I don't want to bring people into a construction zone. But I would like to think that at least once a month, we're doing something like this. And at some point, very soon, we're going to start gathering information, like what do you need? What do we need? What does, what do you see the community needs? How can we address that? I know that's on the heartbeat of the mayor as well. So I want to work closely with, with Mayor Booker in terms of being a partner in the community, not just, not just standalone. So we're very excited about the potential. We're excited to come to a new home. We're excited about some of the construction ideas we've got to, to, to update it a little bit. It's going to be a fun, fun run.
Will the sign still be there? You know, the podium that's out there that says Lexington School? Are you going to keep it there? Or are you going to, and put your name there? What you're going to do?
So we haven't quite decided. I'll tell you, my imagination keeps the silver letters over the door, Lexington School. We'd like to keep that legacy. But maybe there's a way to put in an, an adjacent sign that says West Forty at Lexington School. We'd like to, we'd like to keep that, the front and the legacy of, of a school that was here for 60 years. We don't want to lose that. But kind of like the idea of West Forty at Lexington School. I think, you know, the, the green sign, the podium sign, it's got a neat history to it. On the other hand, I'd also like to have perhaps something electronic somewhere that tells people what's coming up, what's available, what's going on. So we've got an architect who's helping do that. But we're really committed to kind of blending the legacy of the school with a new start and some new services. So I'll, I'll come over and knock on your door and you and I will talk it through.
Okay.
All right. Anything else? Well, again, if you, if, if nothing else, take my business card. So you have my cellphone number. Feel free to use that anytime. We'll do our very best to inform the, the community of when we're going to have meetings like this. Bring a friend, bring five friends. You know, we would love to, to embrace our community and our neighbors and see how we can fit in well. And right from our very hearts, you know, how can we serve? That's, that's really our heartbeat, is serving our community, serving our kids, serving our, our families. So, yes, Barbara?
What is going to be your process for identifying the social service or support groups that are housed here or have access to the, to do programs?
So the, the question is, how are we going to choose which services and which ones come in and how that's, how that's all going to happen? We don't know yet. Mayor Booker has been, you know, he's opened his arms and said, come talk to me, Mark. Let's, let's figure out a plan together. Don't do anything in a silo. Do something with the community so that you are supporting, or maybe you're filling in the blank, or providing something that someone else isn't. So we haven't decided exactly how that's going to, how that's going to work, or even exactly which spaces we'll use. But as we identify which services are needed, then we can reach out to the community and say, who needs space to do this kind of work? And is this a good place and a good partnership, a good match? So we know that that's in our future. We haven't designed the system yet until we've talked to the community and talked to the mayor about how to do that well.
So you do plan to have a kind of a community town hall meeting?
Yep.
Or something of the sort?
Several.
Where people can come and.
Exactly.
Identify the kinds of resources that they have available, to make available to the community.
Right. Exactly. And so the, the idea of community resources is, we would like to be the entity that kind of fills in the blanks. If somebody has a strong presence, I don't, I'm not going to compete for that. And if somebody's doing really good work, then I'm going to do something else to provide a, a, a service that's not already provided. I don't need to compete with others. I need to partner with them and embrace that together. So town hall meetings would be the perfect thing in, in two different ways, right? In our business, we frequently, we use processes where people apply or they propose a service. You know, we can, we can vet that. But first and foremost, we'll start with the community, with our ministerial alliance, with the, with the village, with mayor, like what services are really needed here. And I'm much more concerned about doing it well than doing it quickly. But we know that there are a number of, of things that the community would look for. And if we can help do that, we should. So.
Mr. Brand opening?
So we're planning a ribbon cutting about the middle of August.
About this year?
Yep. And that'll be primarily for the instructional wing. Then we'll do another one for the rest of the building. That'll be in the summer of '23. That's when we'll put in the air conditioning and the windows and things. So that'll be, phase two will be almost a year. We get to cut the ribbons twice. Lots of photo ops. Well, thank you so much for coming. Please help yourself to snacks. These partners of ours, our staff members would be glad to chat with you. And look for future opportunities for us to get together about once a month so we can stay connected and you can watch us grow into the new space. So thank you for coming today. Yes?
Can I make a suggestion?
Yes.
Good afternoon, everyone. If it's possible to have a meeting maybe four or five in the afternoon or after five when everybody is out of work?
Sure, sure.
That was just a suggestion.
Yep.
That's what my neighbors told me. They would have liked to have been here, but because of the timing.
Well, look at you. You're, you're the first one in the know, right? So the suggestion was consider alternate times or additional times into the evening. And as our planning team, we've thought, you know, maybe even a Saturday morning or, you know, give some different options, because we know different families work at different times. And this, this is the time slot that worked well before we start jumping into construction. So you're right on target with us. You know, our thinking is, is that too, multiple times and be able to, so thank you for that. Okay. Well, thanks for coming.
Do you know what you're going to do with this floor? And are you going to keep it the same? I know the artist who did that painting.
Oh, do you?
I think, yeah. If you're going to do something with it, you might want to come and take his last look at it.
Okay. We're not sure what we're going to do with the floor. We do know we want to refinish it so that it's good for kids to play on or, or adults. I understand that there are adults that have basketball leagues and stuff. But the school in general is in an amazing shape. So we're really, really fortunate. We have got a lot to start with. So I'm not sure where that's going to go. It'll, it'll at least get a, a new, a new coat of top, whatever that is, lacquer or something, polyurethane.
Will the voting still be here? Because everybody in this area normally come to vote here. So will that still be here?
It, it is likely to be on this side of the building away from kids. But still, we would still be eligible to be a, a voting place. But I feel really strongly that I want to make sure the kids are not ever in jeopardy. And so.
It was always here in the gym?
Could very well be. Yep.
We have, we worked with the school district to contact the, the folks who run the elections to say that we're set up to do that in this next, this primary that's coming up.
In June. Yep. Yep. Thank you, Mike. Yep. Okay. Well, thank you so much for joining us this afternoon. Help yourself. And there's materials there. There are one-pageer handouts, some water and snacks. And thank you very much for being here.